Hello and good morning. I'm Mount Vernon District Supervisor Dan Stork, and thank you for joining me today. I know many of you are concerned in this rapidly evolving time and have many questions about the coronavirus epidemic and pandemic, county operations, and school closings. So I'm hosting my second town meeting of the year to share what we know and, more importantly, hear from you. I want to point out that, like many newscasts you see lately, we are properly distanced more than six feet apart and have a skeleton crew in the studio with us. We will be dividing this program into two sections. First, we will talk to Dr. Gloria Aruensu to hear the latest on the COVID-19 in our community and how you can protect yourself. During this segment, we will take questions regarding the county operations and any questions you have for Dr. Gloria. Following that discussion, I will be joined by my partner and our team, MVD, Mount Vernon District School Board Member and Board Chair Karen Corbett Sanders and School Superintendent Dr. Scott Braybrand to hear the latest on school operations, distance learning, graduation, and many questions you have for them. We are all looking forward to answering your questions. If you have questions, you can call 703-324-1114 or submit your questions to the Mount Vernon District email inbox, mountvernon@fairfaxcounty.gov, or submit your questions by messaging me on Facebook page at Supervisor Dan Stork or on Twitter at Dan Stork. Thank you all and our first responders and medical workers for your essential work that you've done for us and our essential businesses that have stayed open and everyone else on the front lines. I would like to tell you a little bit about what is going on in the county and the Mount Vernon District. At both the county and district levels, we are hard at work identifying ways we can help individuals, businesses, nonprofits, and service organizations. The county government remains open to provide support and services to our community in this time of great stress and need. Many resources have been identified and made available on my website, www.fairfaxcounty.gov/mountvernon, or you can go directly to the county website, and we will continue to look for more ways we can help. In February, the county executive presented its proposed FY 2021 budget. Based on the anticipated financial impacts of the coronavirus, both the increase in need to fund services and the projected decrease in revenues, county staff is revising the proposed budget. We've already identified and set aside $11 million from third quarter fiscal year 2020 budget review and a reserve to mitigate the impacts of the Corona pandemic. County agencies have also been directed to limit expenses to those of a critical nature. A revised proposed FY 2021 budget will be presented on April 7, and you'll have opportunities to provide public testimony as always. This year, we will be encouraging video and written testimony, although in-person testimony will be an option for those who choose. More information on the various ways to provide budget comments will be provided in the coming days. Next, Fairfax County Chairman Jeff McKay, who is unable to be joined us today, but we'll have a brief message from him now.
Good morning. I'm Jeff McKay, Chairman of the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, and wanted to thank you for participating in today's virtual town hall meeting. I also want to thank Mount Vernon District Supervisor Dan Stork and Mount Vernon District School Board Member and Chairman of the School Board Karen Corbett Sanders for putting this production on this morning. Sorry that I can't join you live during the presentation, but I did want to share with you some important information about what we're doing in Fairfax County. You will get an update on COVID-19 as a part of today's virtual town hall meeting as well as an update on the county budget. Our board recently had a budget committee meeting where we discussed the economic impacts of COVID-19 on Fairfax County. Rest assured that our board is actively managing the situation, both from a public health standpoint, as you will hear, but also from a budgetary standpoint. The county executive will put out a revised budget on April 7 next week, and we hope that folks can have an opportunity to review that and participate in our budget process. As a part of the budget public hearings, we will allow a lot of remote participation, videos to be recorded ahead of time, telephone calls, in-person testimony, which hopefully we can discourage people from making in-person testimony, but we will provide that outlet to make sure that we get the public input that we need on this budget. Clearly, the original county executive's budget has been overtaken by the last few weeks of the COVID-19 crisis. Our board will continue to actively manage the budget and the numbers and put resources into combating this public health crisis. Again, thank you for joining us today, and thank you Supervisor Stork, and thank you School Board Chair Karen Corbett Sanders for this virtual town hall meeting, and know that my office is always ready and willing to assist the residents of Fairfax County in any way we can. Thank you.
And I want to thank Chairman McKay and county leadership for their hundreds of hours of efforts over the past month as they've helped to steer us in a wonderful direction to try to manage this crisis. I also want to remind people that you can email your questions to us at mtvernon, that's mountvernon@fairfaxcounty.gov. In Mount Vernon, we have fully engaged with our nonprofits and faith-based service providers and are proactively working together to solve extraordinary demands. Get help, give help. We are also developing initiatives to support our local and small businesses to see how we can help them. While we are under this stay-at-home order, please consider supporting nonprofits, our service organizations, and local businesses in a way you can order takeout, buy gift cards, donate food, make donations to employee funds. Frankly, anything you can do will be helpful and appreciated. We have created a Get Help, Give Help webpage as an easy resource for those who are in need of assistance and those who are looking for ways to help out. Now, I'd like to welcome my first guest this morning, Fairfax County Health Department Director Dr. Gloria Aruensu, and thank you very much for joining me today, and if you could first give us a brief update on the coronavirus in Fairfax County.
Thank you Supervisor Stork. It's a pleasure to be here. As we've all heard on the news, the outbreak of this new coronavirus continues to grow. There is over a million people worldwide now who have been reported as having been confirmed as cases, including over 270,000 people here in the United States. The different areas in the United States are experiencing different levels of COVID-19 activity. Some areas actually are experiencing community transmission, and here in Virginia, the Virginia Department of Health is reporting widespread community transmission, which means that there are parts of the Commonwealth where disease is spreading in communities, including here in Fairfax County, where we have, to date, over 372 cases out of the 2,000 cases that have been reported in Virginia. And unfortunately, we have had five deaths to date. What the Health Department is doing is investigating every case that is reported to us with the goal of identifying individuals who may have come in contact with the case so that we can provide guidance and enact public health measures that would limit further spread within the community. In addition, we've had recently the governor's stay-at-home order, as well as yesterday's CDC's new guidance on face coverings for people who are in public settings and in settings where it is not possible to maintain the social distancing of six feet and so on. All of these guidances are intended to complement and not replace the public health messages that we have continuously given to everyone, to cover coughs and sneezes, to practice social distancing within six feet, wash hands frequently and thoroughly, and then to stay home when sick.
Thank you. Well, I think those basic messages, if, I think in some ways if folks haven't heard them by now, I'm not sure what planet they're living on, but the challenge we have is not everybody is complying with that. I think that's part of our real, and I'm sure one of your ongoing efforts, is to help people understand why it's so important.
Yes, definitely. You know, I think the message is too simple for people to believe its impact. It is, when done routinely and consistently, it is the most effective tool we have at preventing disease from, you know, running wild within our community.
One of the questions that our office has been hearing about a lot from residents is, why are we not getting information about the number of cases in, like, the Mount Vernon District or have that information by zip code? Another question we're getting quite frequently is, when will there be a COVID-19 testing at Inova Mount Vernon? Since three drive-through test sites have been identified last week, people are getting the impression there is no testing in Mount Vernon. Our office is letting those who ask to know that there is testing available at Inova Mount Vernon, it's just not a drive-through testing. What else can you tell people about getting tested that might, I guess, give them understanding about how they go about doing that and maybe relieve a little bit of their stress about how do I make sure that I'm okay?
So it is true that testing has presented a lot of challenges to our communities. First of all, starting from the fact that only CDC could actually perform the testing, and so that created bottlenecks and wasn't available to all. And since then, state laboratories have also been engaged with the testing, and more recently, commercial labs have also come into the picture. However, the challenge still remains that there is a national shortage of things like the PPE or the respirators that healthcare providers need to safely obtain specimen. There's also a shortage of the specimen collection kits, as well as the reagents that the labs need to process all the specimen. And so as a result of that, for example, to be able to receive testing, you need to have been evaluated by your clinician, your primary care doctor. So if your primary care doctor evaluates you, there are certain criteria that he or she would be following in ordering the tests for you. It's not for everyone. The good news is that most people who come down with COVID illness are not going to be severely ill, and they can self-manage at home, but we recommend that people who have worsening symptoms, including shortness of breath, seek care from a medical provider, and then testing will be done and follow-up and so on. The testing is also available at the state lab. However, that is reserved for a certain, in high priority groups of people. We're talking about healthcare workers and first responders. We're talking about patients who are in hospital, who are hospitalized, as well as patients who live in nursing homes, assisted living facilities, and other congregate settings such as jails and shelters and so on because of the way of how easily disease can spread within these closed settings and the fact that these settings tend to have vulnerable populations. And so the testing challenge continues, but it is improving as more and more areas are open. In Northern Virginia here, there are a few sites. You mentioned Inova. Inova has three sites that are offering the testing at their urgent care centers. There is also Kaiser Permanente, has two sites in Northern Virginia, I think one in Woodbridge and another in Tysons where this is available. And there is a pediatric practice called PM Pediatrics on Lee Highway that is also offering testing for their pediatric patients only. I have to say that, yes, so that's that. And then the last one is the federally qualified health centers. We have two federally qualified health centers in Fairfax, Neighborhood Health, as well as HealthWorks, and both are offering testing for their patients on an appointment basis.
Would that include the Neighborhood Health Center on Richmond Highway as well?
That's correct. The Neighborhood Health Clinic on Richmond Highway is one of those centers where testing is being offered.
And just so folks know where that is, that's at the, really, the Beacon Mall area. It's next door to the fire station, as well as in, for those of us who are a little bit older, it's the former Metro Call building. So it's a pretty distinguishable building right at the top of the hill. I know we have some questions from the audience. I would like to go to those at this point.
Supervisor Stork, we have an email question that we received from Catherine. Which land use, rezoning, et cetera projects for the Mount Vernon District are you going to request move forward now? For example, the Huntington Phase III development.
Well, the chairman, really with the board's support, has identified that we need to stay focused on really our primary efforts right now, which are minimizing our meetings and minimizing the exposure of the many support people who helped to make our meetings possible, as well as we need to reduce the number of land use cases because each one of those requires a public hearing, and with a public hearing, you're introducing more people and more testimony into one of our meetings. So the approach we've used is if there's a particular land use decision that requires more time and is more urgent, those are being identified through the supervisors' offices, and we're in turn sharing that with the chairman and making that part of the schedule. Right now, we don't have this particular site as part of the schedule because it's not been identified as one that's ready for a public hearing.
Dr. Gloria, this is actually a follow-up from what you all were just discussing. The first question was, where are the testing sites in our area? And I think you've addressed that, but the follow-up question from Sarah on email was, if you have a primary care physician in DC, can you still get a prescription to be tested in Virginia? And what types of tests are available locally, and how long does it take to receive the results?
So the requirement for testing is just receiving, is having a referral. Doesn't really matter where the referrals are coming from, and so that's a requirement for testing. Can you tell me the second half of that question again? I'm sorry.
And what types of tests are available locally, and how long does it take to receive the results?
So testing, how long it takes really depends on the lab. It's taking anywhere from a few days to up to a week, it's my understanding. And the testing that is currently here is the PCR test that is used to detect pieces of genetic material of the virus within specimens that are obtained from a person's throat and back of, it's called a nasopharyngeal test, where they put a probe through your nose to the back of your throat and then collect a piece of genetic material and put it in a liquid tube, send it to the lab, and then the lab does the PCR testing to detect the genetic material.
Another question on testing. Why is it, this is from Claire on email, why is it possible to get testing without a prescription in Fredericksburg but not in Fairfax County?
I don't know why. I really don't have an answer to that. The way it's done here in many parts of the national capital region is that people see their primary care provider, who then assesses the patient, to see what it is that they have. You know, not all respiratory illnesses are COVID. We're just on the edge, on the downswing of flu season. Many of the tests that have been performed have actually come back negative for COVID. So I did mention earlier that Virginia has 2,000 positive confirmed cases out of about 19,000 tests that have been performed. So it's important for a person who is having upper respiratory symptoms, if it's not COVID, for them to be able to know what it is that is wrong with them so that they could have the appropriate care, which is why that interim step of seeing a provider who can then rule out other things, and if they suspect it still is COVID, then give you that last step of getting the COVID test.
Another question from email from Kathy. What is the status at Mount Vernon Hospital now? What is the anticipated need there, and are there plans to provide additional beds there if needed? Is there anything that we can do to help the staff at Mount Vernon?
So in terms of hospital search capacity, the hospitals in the Inova system, as well as hospitals throughout the Northern Virginia, have for a long time been looking at search capacity as it relates to pandemics, and they have built internal search capacity measures which allows them to surge up to like 70% within the hospitals. So there have been a number of models that are being looked at to look at the ability of the search capacity needs, to look at the effectiveness of the search capacity measures that are within our community. And, you know, the measures that were currently taken in terms of the stay-at-home measures and all the other public health, social distancing, and other personal and environmental measures that are currently in place are intended to prevent the rapid exponential growth of cases and flatten the curve, as we have always heard it said, with the goal of decreasing the numbers so that hospitals are not overwhelmed and can optimize the care that they need, that every patient needs, so they don't have to rush in terms of ventilators or whatever. So that's the strategy that is ongoing right now, and we hope that all these additional measures that are being put in place is able to slow that curve.
We have a question from Diane on Facebook, so like two questions. Does the Health Department notify the public or specific customers when an employee of an essential business tests positive for COVID-19? And can mosquitoes transmit the COVID-19 virus?
So I'll answer the second question first because it is easier. To date, mosquitoes are not a known vector for spreading COVID. It is spread through respiratory secretions when a person is standing within six feet of another person who is infected, and so when that infected person speaks, droplets that comes out of the mouth when they cough then could directly hit the person in front of them and infect them, or the droplets can drop onto a surface such as a table or, you know, elevator button or whatever, and then when a person goes back and touches those surfaces, they can reinfect themselves. They can actually infect themselves.
Supervisor Stork, we have a question from Susan on Facebook. A salesman went door-to-door for four hours claiming he was essential, possibly infecting an entire neighborhood. Can you address this and get the governor and media to alert people to the possible dangers of this?
I'd be happy to respond. I'm not aware of the specifics with the person who's going door-to-door, but in general, our police have been very responsive to anybody who has questions or concerns about social distancing and whether or not they're an essential business. So I would urge the person to call the non-emergency police number. That's probably the best way to do that. We have a phone call. Can we bring a phone call in? Yes.
Hello?
Hello. Welcome to the Mount Vernon, virtual Mount Vernon Town Meeting.
Hi. I was asking if, will we be able to get COVID-19 stats by area or zip code?
Dr. Gloria, yes, please.
So the answer is no, and the reason is because there is community, wide community transmission going on. A case only represents a place of residence and not necessarily where transmission is going on. So providing that information will create a false sense of security for members of our community, thinking that there are more cases in a certain part of Fairfax versus the other, and be complacent and as opposed to being vigilant about maintaining all the public health recommendations that we have instituted and are recommending so far. So that's the reason why zip code by zip code information is not going to be done. If I can give an example.
Sure, please.
Let's say a certain zip code area has 10 cases, but all of them are carrying in a long-term care facility, and there's another zip code that has similar number of cases, 10 cases, but all 10 cases are in the community and there is no, public health has not been able to make a link. On the surface, it might look like both scenarios are the same, when in fact, the second scenario of having the 10 cases within the community for which there is no EpiLink is a more concerning situation than the 10 in the long-term care facility. So...
Maybe to get at the, kind of, the question from the caller is, is there a way, if a community seems to have more community spread cases, is there a way to urge more heightened stay, you know, social distancing and surface cleansing than maybe there would be without it? So we know certain parts of the country have had many more cases, I think people are more hyper-focused on that, whereas other parts of the country where it's been less of an issue, people maybe aren't quite as diligent, not quite as focused. I think maybe part of the caller's question is, is it appropriate or is there something that we could or should do if certain parts of Fairfax County seem to have more intensive community spread versus a more focused?
So by definition, a pandemic occurs when we have a new virus for which there is no immunity. There's no one in our population is immune to this virus, and so everyone is susceptible and everyone is at risk of becoming sick if they were to become infected. And so the intent is, or the focus is for everyone to practice those measures to prevent disease from spreading, as opposed to trying to track where the disease is, because you just don't know. Somebody from an area where the zip code data shows that there isn't a lot of transmission could, you could be in that area, but then meet somebody from another area where there's high transmission and not know that. And so it's not where you are, it's the human behavior, which is why a lot of the public health measures are focusing on individual behavior.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's about everybody covering your coughs and your sneezes, no matter where you are. Everyone washing your hands frequently, no matter where you are. And everyone staying home when you're sick, no matter where you are. This disease is transmitted through human behavior and not necessarily where you are living or standing. Because as I said, everyone is susceptible and will come down with disease if exposed.
I appreciate the intensity and the determination I saw on your face and heard in your voice as you were saying that because I know we, we all have a tendency to, to let our guard down at times. And, and what I hear from you as our Health Department leader and really our, our core person who's leading us through this crisis is saying, we cannot let down. We have to stay focused. We have to be diligent throughout. We have another phone call that we want to bring in? Yes, please.
Hi. My name is Claire. Now that they're recommending that you wear masks or cloth coverings over your face, will the fabric store at Beacon Hill be allowed to open again?
Dr. Gloria, I think we understood the question was, now that we can wear masks, it should be a little bit easier to get out in the public and, and I mean, go to some of the stores that we have need to shop in or get merchandise from. Why not? Why can't we now open this up a little bit more?
So the, 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 what do you call it? The mouth coverings that are being recommended for everyone to use is yet another layer of, of public health prevention methods for individuals who may not necessarily know that they are infected and are transmitting virus and preventing that from spreading. This is just one of many other measures that are currently in place. And as I said earlier, all of these measures have come together to try to slow the exponential growth of, of, of new cases and to put a little bit of, of a halt in that upward trajectory so that hospitals do not become overwhelmed. We've just now instituted all of these measures. It takes a while. There's always a lag between when these measures begin to see a downhill in terms of number of cases because people have already been infected already. And as you know, this takes, after an infection, you have up to 14 days to actually come down with illness. So this cascade of events will continue to, will continue in our, in our, in our community even when, even though we have this new, these new recommendations in place. The questions, the caller's question is about, I, I think, is pointing to the fact that as these, the stay order, the stay at home order and all these recommendations are eventually lifted, they will have to be lifted in a way that keeps the goal of all the social distancing measures that I have alluded to, which is not overwhelming the health system. It's going to be a very tricky act.
Yeah.
That public health officials watch and calibrate very carefully so that we don't have an upward swing. Why? Because as I said earlier, all of us are susceptible. This is a new virus. And the minute we open up, we will start seeing the upward swing again. So at this point, the goal is really to seize all possible transmissions from happening and to then look at its impact on our community and especially in our hospital settings. And I don't know what the politicians and, and the people in CDC and so on, as our federal government works with, with CDC and other public health, with other public health leaders to look at a strategy for which these restrictions are released.
When the right time is. We have, we have another phone call. You're on, please?
Yeah, this is Claire again. I wanted to know about that specific store so that we can buy supplies to make masks because, you know, fabric is not available in grocery stores.
So I think to, yes, and sorry if I misunderstood that question. The answer to that is that, you know, it doesn't have to be any special fabric. It could be a bandana, it could be a scarf, it could be anything that you have that you can use to just, it's about covering your nose and your mouth. Something that can do, have a good seal around, around your face, your nose and your mouth and under your chin. That's all that's needed. So it would be nice if, you know, people who like to sew could get, you know, special fabric to make this. But I think everybody in America has something in their house that they can use to cover their mouths and their noses.
So in this case, for the mask, that really any type of fabric would be, is useful and, and don't have to necessarily have some new fabric in order to be able to make those masks.
No.
I realize there may be other reasons that, that Claire, you understood and go to the fabric store, but if the core of that is on the masks and how to make them. And I know that at least at our house, my wife got her sewing machine out and she's been sewing away. And she had a whole bunch of fabrics that, that frankly were, that had kind of worn out, had their useful life was gone, but that parts of it could still work very well. And she's sewn them together and we've been using that and giving those out to folks that we know as well. So you can make a difference and you can help folks in that way, for sure.
We have another email question from Sharon. Any, this is for Dr. Gloria. Any suggestions on those in the high-risk categories getting home grocery delivery so they don't have to go out?
So that is a good thing for people who are in high-risk categories. We're talking about the elderly, people with underlying medical conditions. And fortunately, I think, you know, during this new phase of our time, at least unprecedented times, we've become very creative. Many food establishments that previously didn't do, you know, deliveries are getting into their delivery business. There are already other businesses that will deliver food for you and so on. So I think because of that, people in high-risk situations, people who had high risk of severe disease from COVID should take advantage of these transport, these delivery mechanisms and stay home as much as they can.
And if, if they're not able to find somebody to deliver those goods or they're, they're not sure if the, the organization's supporting them, my advice to them is to let us know. I mean, we have a, we have a website that says, Give Help, Get Help. So if it's Get Help, something you're looking to, to need some assistance with, you're welcome to go there and, and click on that. Or the other alternative is just to send us an email at M T V E R N O N, that's Mount Vernon at FairfaxCounty.gov. And we'll be happy to work with you and work with a vendor to, to connect the two of you together and hopefully make a difference for you, keep you healthy.
Supervisor Stork, we have an email question from Greg. Several nights ago, a police cruiser slowly drove through our neighborhood with flashing blue lights. They were not the emergency lights. Never saw this on display before. Were they cruising through to see if neighbors were properly social distancing?
Greg, I had, I had the same experience three nights ago. I was driving home and running into my neighborhood and I saw a police cruiser that had just turned into my neighborhood. The blue, blue lights were on and I was trying to figure out what that was. I ended up following the police car through my neighborhood and saw them exit. And then I realized that that's probably what it was. And since that time, we've put that in our newsletter and we're hopefully, and I know the police are getting the word out, that that's all part of just showing visibility, letting folks know that they're in the community, they're engaged, they're here to make a difference. If there's something that you need, you know, you're welcome to come out and flag them down. They'll obviously will maintain the, the appropriate social distancing, but they're, they're going to be happy to help. But our public safety people are here to serve us and they've been doing a fantastic job. Not only our, our police, but clearly our first responders. So if you have a need, always use the non-emergency number. We can put that at the bottom of the screen. But regardless, let them know and frankly, share your thanks because we are deeply grateful for not only their work, but obviously the work of our Health Department employees who have been working non-stop for now months because of the amount of effort it's taken to really truly get us where we are today with the preparation and even the, the planning and, and how now do we make sure that we can execute the, the plans that you all have been putting together. We have a phone call?
Yes. This is Patricia calling from Mount Vernon area. And I have a question for the doctor and also for you. I'm retired law enforcement federal and I have relatives who are first responders, relatives in the sheriff's office, Fairfax County, also nurses who are on the front line. My concern is, what I've been trying to determine is if there's any consolidated effort to try to get, you know, we're talking about masks for the public, but my concern is having enough protective equipment for our first responders and our frontline health officials. And is there any kind of coordinated effort to get those to them? I've been on the phone this week actually with different companies throughout the country, trying to see what kind of sources there may be. But I don't know if they're, on the agency level that they're doing that. And I'm here to help. And I think there are many people in the community. I know several ladies who are willing to make masks and so forth. Now, they're not the quality of the mask that is needed for the frontline. But doctor, can you, can you address that and what we can do to help? And if there's some coordinated avenue that we can go through to provide volunteer opportunities for that?
So thank you for your offer. And I'm, it's so heartwarming to find so many people within our community who are looking to do something to help. The one avenue that we are asking people to go through is through the Office of Emergency Management to see who, they are collecting information on all kinds of resources that community members are bringing to our attention. I don't have the phone number for that, but if you go through our published, the Health Department's published call center line, which is online, you can be, you may be able to be, they will direct you to the, to that OEM resource. So one of the things that the, the face covering recommendation that CDC has put out with is, that's why they, they didn't choose, that's why they chose the words very carefully and didn't use the word mask, but a face covering. Because as the caller has rightly identified, masks are in short supply. And these are resources that healthcare workers as well as people who may be caring for a loved one at home and so on, will need to protect themselves. And so for those, for everyone else who, for whom the, for whom they should go outside in, in public settings and, and, and need to cover their, their face, you know, their mouths and their noses, a cloth face piece is, is all that is required. And it's required, it's, it's also important to use that because it's easily washable. Reusing a mask could be quite dangerous if you don't know how to, you know, put it on and, and take it off. Everybody wants to have a mask, but what they don't realize is that the outside of the mask can actually get contaminated. And if you were to remove your mask by touching the front of the mask and removing it, you will be using your hands to touch the front of the mask, which is contaminated. And then, like we all do, without recognizing it, we're touching our face, we're touching our eyes and our lips and get contaminated that way. And then the masks are in short supply. So what will people want to do? They might want to reuse it. So the mask is actually, could be dangerous if, if it's not used properly, which is why I like the cloth covering. And because when you take it off, you can throw it in your washing machine and it's clean and then reuse it multiple times.
Excellent. We have another phone call?
Oh, well, I just wanted to-
Oh, yes, uh-huh. Hello?
Hello?
Yes, we hear you.
My name's Diane.
Diane? Yes, if you have a question?
I'm Diane. Yes. I'm waving to you both. I want to tell you, your, your Meals on Wheels for Fairfax people like myself are very helpful. And I think you ought to notify them or let them know that they're doing a great job for us, for citizens.
Thank you. I appreciate the Meals on Wheels drivers, the people who are delivering that are really doing just amazing work. And I know keeping people healthy as well as safer by being able to provide that food in their home. Did you have a question for us?
Yeah. Can you tell me also, what's the requirements to get it sometimes?
Oh, I see. The requirements for the Meals on Wheels program. Dr. Gloria, I don't know if you know off the top of your head. I don't know. I know that we have a website that can provide that information. And if you send us, if you send us an email, we would be happy to follow up with you today and, and make sure that you get that information. Off the top of my head, I don't know what, I, I know it's related to a disability and sometimes age, but without that specific information, I probably wouldn't be able to help you regardless. But if you send an email to M T V E R N O N at FairfaxCounty.gov, that's Mount Vernon at FairfaxCounty.gov, we'll be happy to follow up and, and find out what the eligibility is and, and help you.
I'm going to tell you something else that I like. Fairfax really does help people like myself. My husband died September 28, 2019.
I'm very sorry to hear that.
And I'm having a hard time with it. People here are really helpful.
Excellent.
They do a lot of good work.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your call.
You're welcome.
Dr. Gloria, we have another question from email from Mark. Given what New York Governor Cuomo tells us daily that the virus will reach other cities and overwhelm public health systems, how many hospital beds do the 1.1 million residents of Fairfax County have access to? Perhaps 3,500? Additionally, how many ventilators do we have at Inova Mount Vernon and how many ventilators countywide?
So unfortunately, I don't have an answer to that question. The Virginia Department of Health is currently working with the Virginia Hospital Alliance to collect that information. What I do know is that over the years, between, over, over the year since 2001, hospitals have engaged in search capacity activities to be able to respond to the increased number of patients that would ensue as a result of a pandemic and have increased their ability to take care of patients by about 70%. And it's not all about having extra beds, but sometimes they have put in, what do you call it? You know, the plugs that you have in, in hospitals for suctioning and, and, and so on. They, they have put some of these in hallways, in, in, in extra spaces within the hospital so that cots and so on could be used if needed. So I don't have numbers, but some of the modeling that have been done is to look precisely at those numbers and when the system would be overwhelmed, which is why these measures, these community mitigation measures are in place to keep the numbers down so that the hospitals are not overwhelmed. Currently, hospitals are not overwhelmed anywhere in Fairfax that I'm aware of.
And I'm not aware of even in the Washington metro area at this point. I think, and I think that's partly because we've, I think, been in front of this at least.
That's correct.
In terms of ensuring people keep the social distancing, the stay at home, the number of things. And I was wondering if there's even any difference between kind of this metro area versus the rest of Virginia because we see both data. Is that part of the conversation that, that you're having at a state level? Is that one part of the area, one, one metropolitan area within Virginia is at a different stage versus another?
Of course. Northern Virginia is acting more like the national capital region as opposed to Virginia. But we do have areas of transmission in, for example, the Richmond, tidewater areas.
Tide Water, sure.
And so on. But as a whole, we look at ourselves more in line with Northern Virginia simply because, as you know, we live in one place and socialize in other places. And there's just so much mixing of our community across those state lines.
Thank you. We have a, we have an internet question as well? We have an internet question as well?
Dr. Gloria, this is, I think, a little bit of a follow on what you just said. In view of the fact that Northern Virginia is so different from most of Virginia, when is COVID-19 expected to peak in Northern Virginia?
So, again, models, there's few models out there. And one of the models from, I believe Michigan, had predicted that peak of, you know, that the COVID would peak around May 2nd area, early May. It got shifted a little bit to mid-May, but it really is hard to predict in light of all the measures that are currently happening. So that prediction, that modeling prediction did not, for example, put into account the stay-at-home order that we currently have. So, there are a lot of social distancing measures that have, that we are currently abiding by, which is putting a lot of pressure on transmission and will therefore move the peak, you know, further out as well as flatten the peak.
Excellent. We have another phone call? Yes?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. I wonder if I could ask a question about how to take care of our groceries when we purchase them? Do we need to wash the fruits and vegetables?
Even when we don't have a COVID pandemic, I would hope that we are all washing our fruits and vegetables when we purchase them from the grocery stores, simply because people touch them. Sometimes things fall on the floor and they, you know, get put back on the pile. So, that is good practice. Hand washing and washing of fruits and vegetables is always highly recommended because of the spread of diseases, all kinds of diseases, including COVID. You know, people don't recognize that a lot of the diseases that spread within our community, norovirus, we, before this, we heard a lot about norovirus.
Sure, yes.
Influenza, meningitis, all of these hepatitis, all of these hepatitis A, all of these diseases are spread because we don't wash our hands properly. So, hand washing and washing of food especially is of utmost importance.
And I understood her question maybe also is that canned goods or bags of something that I get that clearly have been handled in the store, is that something that I should, you know, also, you know, wash or some or other, you know, remove, you know, that somebody else having touched them? Is that something I should be overly concerned about or something that?
I think the general hand washing and or washing of things that we get from the store is sufficient at this time. It's all about when you're cooking, you know, washing your hands before and doing the similar things that you would do in the, sorry, that you would do in the past.
Yeah, sure, sure.
So, that, those, there is no new guidance as opposed to, as it relates to wiping down your can of tomatoes or anything like that. It's about washing your hands and opening up whatever you do and then that should be fine.
Thank you. We have another phone call and then I want to try to bring in our school folks. Yes, please? You're at the virtual Mount Vernon Town Meeting? Welcome.
Hello, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hey, I'm calling in regard to the county budget and I know there was speculation on maybe having a 4% increase on real estate taxes and things like that to be able to fully fund programs in the county.
Yes, I know that the, well, the original county executive budget had in it whatever increase would come from an increase in property values, but there also, he was recommending a three cent rate increase. I don't, I'm not sure what he'll be recommending at this point in time. I know that we are all very aware that money is tight all across the board. I will look forward to what he recommends on the 7th when he brings that out and I think we're going to have to just go from there. There'll be plenty of opportunity over the next few weeks after that to share your thoughts and absolutely communicate them with me and other board supervisor members. But I will, I will, like you, be looking forward to reading and seeing what the county executive presents on April 7th. And from that, we'll just need to go forward. The public hearings will be the following week. So, please take a look and again, you're welcome to sign up and either, or just to send directly to us your public testimony. One of the things that I did when I got on the board of supervisors a little over four years ago is tried to increase the ease with which the public can communicate with the board and give public testimony. And I'm pleased to say that over the last year, we've changed how we accept budget testimony. So you now can literally, it's as simple as taking out your iPhone or taking out your phone, recording a two or three minute at the most video of whatever information you want to convey to us, either to not to raise taxes or to raise taxes or to fund this program or not fund this program. It's as simple as that and then you would upload that to the website and then you literally, that testimony gets shared with us. So, looking forward to that. We will also, chairman of the school board and I, Karen Corbett Sanders, we will be hosting a budget town meeting. We haven't set the date for that, so it'll be a virtual town meeting much like this one and we look forward to sharing and following that, the budget that comes out from the county executive, having discussion and dialogue with the community as a whole about that. Thank you. We have, we have last phone call? Yes. And then we'll go to our public school folks. Yes?
Hello, this is Tom and I'm calling to ask the doctor, when we clean fruits and vegetables, what is the best way to do that? We've understood that some people are washing them in a solution of water and like baking soda or something like that. Can you comment on that, please?
So, washing fruits and vegetables with running water is all that is plenty. You know, many people don't recognize that, don't realize that it's the actual running of water and rubbing of either your hands or your fruit is what removes the dirt and the germs. So, that is sufficient.
So it's not necessarily a soap or baking soda or anything else. It's taking that and putting water and having, and then literally wiping it with your hands. And of course, when you're all done with that, you should probably wash your hands?
That's correct. So it's about washing it under running water. That as you're rubbing your fruit, your vegetables, whatever, your hands, that there's running water to remove the dirt and the germs that is coming off of it.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful.
Thank you as well. Thank you for calling. We will now take a short break so that our Fairfax County Public School guests can join me in the studio to discuss the status of the schools and we will be right back. Thank you.
Hi, this is Dan Stork, I'm Mount Vernon District Supervisor again, and I have on the phone with me, our Chairman of the School Board Karen Corbett Sanders and my partner in Mount Vernon District. We want to welcome you back to our town meeting. We're now going to hear about the changes in our school system. As you know, schools have been closed since March 13th, and I know anybody who's a parent especially knows that. And at FCPS, they've been doing a good job of adapting to our rapidly evolving landscape. From setting up schools feed sites or food sites, as well as bus distribution to our needed students, to accelerating distance learning, figuring out how our seniors will graduate. Wow, my next two guests have their teams have been hard at work. And with that, I'm going to have ask Mount Vernon School Board member and Chair of our School Board Karen Corbett Sanders to join me, and our Superintendent of Schools Dr. Scott Braybrand. Thank you both for being here today.
Dan, thank you so much for having us. At no other time is it more important to have a one Fairfax view on how we do business and approach this historic challenge before us, the pandemic of COVID-19. And that one Fairfax approach has resulted in, you know, not only the close relationship between the Board of Supervisors and the School Board, but between our county services and our school system, as well as with our nonprofits. I want to especially thank Dr. Braybrand for being with us today, but more importantly, for the incredibly hard work that he and his leadership team have undertaken since, actually, prior to March 13 when schools were closed. Since schools have been closed, we have been working first to address the most important aspect of our children's lives, which is ensuring that they have food security. And we rolled out an extensive food distribution network, which includes 34 sites, as well as bus transportation. And here in the Mount Vernon region, those sites include Bucknell, Cameron Elementary, Edison High School, Fort Belvoir Elementary, Hyblu Valley, Lorton Station, Mount Vernon Woods, South County High School, the Audubon Trailer Park, Gum Springs, and Mount Eagle Elementary School. We are constantly reevaluating and making sure that we do whatever is possible to reach the needs of these students. Just yesterday, we served 20,000 students, and overall, we sold 210,000 meals. We also rolled out this week our Distance Learning Program. The Distance Learning Program is the best example I've ever seen of the true partnership between parents, teachers, and students for our students to realize a tough education in the most difficult times. That Distance Learning Program is a tiered approach to distance learning, depending on the age level of our students, and it's multifaceted, including sending work-at-home packets to all of our eighth graders, distributing technology to our middle and high school students, and where possible, to the lower grades in our elementary schools. We also had to acquire and distribute over 1,000 MiFi units. We needed to actually order 700 of them, and because of the excellent work of our Assistant Superintendent for Technology, she was able to acquire those for us in a very short time. In addition to the distance learning initiatives, we are also very worried and focused on the social-emotional supports for our students. And along those lines, we opened up this week an ability for families to schedule a 30-minute session with our school psychologists and social workers for their students. And so, please go onto the FCPS website to get more information about that. We're also working with our high school seniors to make sure that they can graduate on time, albeit a very different graduation than what we all envisioned for them at the beginning of the year. We can talk a little bit more about that. We will be starting next week in response to our county executive putting forth a new budget. The School Board and the Superintendent will immediately start working on how schools will have to adjust their expectations as a result of the changing landscape of the county budget. And with that, I wanted to make it short and sweet so that we could take questions.
Excellent, thank you. Did Dr. Braybrand, did he want to add anything, to provide any overview himself?
Sure, thank you Supervisor Stork, and thank you Chairman Corbett Sanders. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning, and it's so great to see both of you as leaders here in our school system and in the county, reaching out to your community. I think really Chairman Corbett Sanders has said it all, I'm very proud of our staff. We've been working very collaboratively with the county, including the county executive Ryan Hill and his leadership team, and my leadership team, to stand up food distribution sites, to provide technology distribution to our kids as we start distance learning. I really just appreciate all of the outpouring of support. Our team has never been stronger, our collaboration has never been stronger, and we're going to need to continue that strength moving forward as we work through the challenges of COVID-19. And I want you to know too, we're not only looking at the challenges before us, but we're also anticipating what additional educational supports we're going to need to provide students after this challenge has passed. But really, I think this is a great opportunity for questions and answers, and we'll be glad to answer any questions that you or your folks would like to.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, and thank you Karen. I'm going to go to the questions, we have a phone call to start, and you are on the virtual town meeting with Chairman Corbett Sanders, Dr. Braybrand, myself, and Dr. Gloria Atsu. Yes?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
This is Marverita, and I've been a resident of Fairfax County since '68. I had a question about the education, but the lady that was just talking answered me the question. But I have another one, where can I go to get a test for CO19? My doctor sends me to Mount Vernon, and Mount Vernon sends me back to my doctor, so I really don't know.
Yes.
So, as I said earlier, there are challenges associated with testing. And instead of maybe going through the information that I already provided, if you could call our call center, unfortunately, I don't have that number of hand, but on the Fairfax County Health Department's website, there is a number for our call center, and someone at our call center will be able to help you. There are different areas within our community that is increasingly beginning to provide testing. On the Route 1 corridor, I had mentioned that Neighborhood Health is providing testing, but it's only for patients, so I don't know if you're a patient at Neighborhood Health.
No, I haven't.
No. So I also mentioned about Kaiser Permanente's Woodbridge and Tyson's drive-through locations.
I get my Medicare and my doctors.
Okay, so if you have a doctor's referral, maybe you might be able to obtain testing through Inova's three urgent care sites. One is the Dallas South, the other is North Allington, and the third is a Tyson's site where they are currently providing testing through their urgent cares. Again, if you're able to get that phone number, one of the callers, oh, sorry, one of the people on the other end will be able to help you with this information.
Thank you.
There was another question that I had, but it was not for me. This is for a family from out of country. They have been living here since 2002. They rent their taxes every year since that year 2002, starting in 2002, because the lawyer told them that they should go ahead and pay their taxes, and they have done it. In the meantime, after a few years, they have some two kids. Now, you know that the government has issued, you know, the help that they are through this new law about the Recovery Act or the Emergency Act for people that are unemployed. Her husband works, and she works, and she just lost her job. But they're non-citizens, he has a green card. Will they get part of that money?
I know that the act was just passed last week. I am not certain who will be getting the checks. I know they're widespread, I don't know if it's limited to what residence it's limited to or not. My advice, if you want to send that as an email question to us, we will definitely...
I don't have an email.
The email is M-T-V-E-R, I'm sorry?
I don't have a computer, I don't have any technology, only the phone and the TV.
That's okay, if you could call us, and probably the best number to call us is just call our phone number now, we'll get it as a voicemail message, but we can get back with you and guide you to somebody who can help you. That phone number is 703-780-7518. And there'll just be a voicemail, just leave a voicemail with your specific information, and we will do our best to get back with you in the next day or two with whatever information, or at least to point you in the right direction.
Okay, I've been going to your town halls all the time.
Thank you very, very much, it's a pleasure to have you come, and I'm glad to hear you today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to go to open the program to your questions. If you have questions, you can call 703-324-1114, which is, again, if you have questions, you can call 703-324-1114, or you can submit your questions to the Mount Vernon District email inbox, which is M-T-V-E-R-N-O-N, that's mountvernon@fairfaxcounty.gov, or submit your questions by messaging me on Facebook, on our Facebook page, @SupervisorDanStork, or on Twitter @DanStork. We now have an online message, and happy to take it.
This is an email question from Kay, and she's asking if it would be possible to switch the school year around type schools like other countries have.
Could you repeat, she's asking about the school year, could you repeat that, please?
Sure, she's asking if we could switch the school year the way other countries have. Not sure what the...
So the question is whether or not we are considering switching the school year to a year-round model similar to other places in the world?
Correct.
I know we've had discussions, and I'm going to allow Dr. Braybrand to provide some insights into that.
Sure, thank you Chairman Corbett Sanders. The calendar that we have currently for this school year remains the same. We're actually beginning our spring break this week to give our folks just a final chance to be ready to transition to the Distance Learning Program. As far as the calendar for the next school year, the School Board approved that almost a year ago. We've shared that out with families for several months, and we're all look carefully at what additional options that we may need to support students after this COVID-19 crisis has passed. We are looking at summer school opportunities, but we have to be very mindful of the Governor's Executive Order. Right now, the stay-at-home order is through June 10. Summer school traditionally for Fairfax County Public Schools has not started until early July, so that remains a possibility, as well as doing something early in August before the start of the school year. I'm not going to rule anything out around the school calendar, and it's important, and Chairman Corbett Sanders knows this, that any school calendar decisions would come before the Fairfax County School Board for any final approval. So we're going to look at everything, but right now, there are no changes for this year's calendar or for next year's calendar.
And Dr. Braybrand, we do have a task force working on how to best address the needs for bridging the gaps and making sure that we provide the best supports possible for mitigating the impact of this virus on the closure of our schools for our most at-risk students.
Absolutely, absolutely. Our Chief Equity Officer, Dr. Francisco Duran, has already put a team together, and they're beginning to explore these very issues. And once we've pulled together some recommendations, we'll be bringing them forward to the School Board for review and for community review and input.
Excellent, thank you. We now have a phone call. You're joining the virtual Mount Vernon Town Meeting, welcome.
Hi, thank you very much for taking my call. My question is about high school, and it's two quick questions. I want to know what does the district stand on teachers applying a late penalty for the third quarter work that students are allowed to make up? And also, is there any consideration, I know fourth quarter is going to be a no mark. I do know some districts are, if students on the digital work, complete at least 60% of the work, they're giving them a 100% for fourth quarter, and if they complete less than 60%, then they're getting a no mark. Those are my two questions, I hope it makes sense.
Dan, would you mind repeating that, because it was very hard to hear?
I'm not sure I can repeat all of it, I know, ma'am, if you could just, why don't you repeat it, and maybe speak a little bit more slowly, we have, it's easier for us to hear you, and if you wouldn't mind doing it again, that would probably be best for all of us.
Okay. What is this, maybe I should turn off the TV?
Or turn it down, that would be very helpful, yes.
What is the district's stance on teachers applying a late penalty for the third quarter work that the students are allowed to make up? And also, in terms of fourth quarter grade being a no mark? I know some districts are allowing students, if they complete 60% of the digital work, to get a 100% for fourth quarter, and those students who complete less than 60% will get a no mark.
So the question is about our grading policy and how that will be implemented with our distance learning. And Dr. Braybrand and his team briefed the School Board last week on how the grading policy would be implemented with distance learning. And at the guidance of the Governor, we are closing out our third quarter as of March 12, which was the last day the kids were in school. However, we are giving them the opportunity through April 24 to make up any work that had not already been submitted, to do retakes, and to demonstrate mastery of learning for the third quarter grade. We're encouraging all of our students to work closely with their teachers and their building administrators to make sure that they take advantage of this opportunity. Concurrent with that, we're starting the fourth quarter on April 14, when our students return to learn. However, as you mentioned, that quarter will be a no-marked quarter, which means that our children will be encouraged to participate in learning and to continue to demonstrate mastery, which can only improve their overall annual grade. It cannot diminish their grade for the year.
Right, I understand that. What I was saying is, in the high school, some of the teachers are, for that third quarter work that the students are making up that they may have missed, they're assigning a late penalty, and I'm like, is that appropriate for them to assign a late penalty, considering our circumstances?
A late penalty?
So your question is about late work?
She was saying, yeah. There's a late penalty.
Students will have until April 24 to get all of their work in. And Dr. Braybrand, do you want to expand upon this, since you've been working very closely with Dr. Presidio on this?
Sure, actually, you've summarized it quite well. The third quarter grade book remains open, it will remain open through April 24. That's several weeks for folks to get in. Any remaining work that students didn't get to turn in to the teacher, and those things will be graded, and there will be a third quarter grade assigned. A lot of people have asked about report cards. Report cards for third quarter will go out shortly after April 24. We want to give teachers time to have kids turn in those remaining assignments, and to go ahead and have them graded and put in the grade book. Fourth quarter really is an opportunity for new instruction and new learning, but it will not hurt, only help students' grades. And fourth quarter work will inform students' overall final grade. So while you're hearing about a no mark for fourth quarter, all of the work done in fourth quarter will inform students' final grade with the provision that it will only help their grades, not hurt them. So, we're really, really pleased, and this follows our own current Fairfax County Public Schools grading policy that's around mastery of learning, and around trending, and letting students show even at the end of fourth quarter, their work on concepts to impact their overall grade. And I want to remind a few folks too, you may have, say, for example, some seniors or even underclassmen who were struggling before March 12. You still have time in fourth quarter to get that grade up to a passing grade. So even if your child was struggling during this time, we're going to give every opportunity to support children to be able to get promoted, to pass the class, and to continue to move forward. And those students that still have some struggles will be working to design the additional supports, we already talked about Dr. Duran and his team. We want every kid, regardless of the challenge before us, to continue to get a good education, a great education here in Fairfax, and to feel supported, and get that support they need.
If I can, I'm sorry, I do understand. I should say I'm a high school counselor in another school system. What I'm saying about the late penalty is, I understand they have until April 24, but students are making up missed work that they didn't have in third quarter. For example, if a student is making up an assignment from end of February that's part of third quarter, teachers are assessing a late penalty. What does the district stand on that, if you're allowing students to make up work from third quarter?
So ma'am, this seems very specific to your own child, and I would encourage you to reach out directly to the principal of your child's school, and please feel free to courtesy copy either Dr. Braybrand or I on that email referencing that you had posed this question during our town hall. But I know, having spoken to all of our principals, that they are very focused on supporting... supporting the individual needs of each of our students during this time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you as well for calling. We have another phone call, and this is the virtual town meeting. Welcome.
Hello?
Yes. Good morning.
Oh, hi. I think there's a new vector for spreading the virus in Fairfax County that no one seems to be paying attention to. I assume the governor's order, all nonessential businesses must shut. What about commercial lawn services? They're sending like three or four, sometimes five, people to a job site in a pickup truck. Typically, they don't have hand or mask protection. I don't see how shoveling mulch is an essential service, and they're going from job site to job site. When the rest of us have to stay home, can't go to our jobs, the gym is closed, we can't use library services, I don't really see this as a... And, for that matter, the yard debris pickup for which we pay taxes has been suspended, and I can understand that. But, under those circumstances, why are lawn service trucks coursing through the neighborhood every day?
As I understand, the governor's executive order, they have been permitted as an essential business. Now, whether or not they're practicing the appropriate social distancing, it sounds like that's, regardless that that's an issue. I would just, again, send, if you would send an email to our office, that's probably the best way. We would be happy to follow up with, and if you know the particular company, the specific details, we'd be happy to advise the police or others who are frankly having these conversations on a regular basis with companies and organizations, reminding them about the social distancing requirements. Those aren't nice to do. Those are requirements, as well as what, who, and what the essential businesses are. But, I believe that they are an essential business, so it'd be more a focus on the social distancing.
I think the governor frankly needs to revise his decree, because there's no way they can have social distance going from job site to job site, and sometimes even just doing the job, getting the equipment out of the truck, et cetera. So, I would urge people to really think hard about it, and yes, I've already sent an email to your office.
Well, thank you very much.
I don't know if complaining will do any good, but I just think this is just a glaring exception that really, you know, it's just another vector to spread and increase the caseload.
I think your point's well taken, and I'd be more than happy to follow up and share and raise the same issues that you've just raised. It sounds like something is not being done consistent with what we all expect each of us to do. And, why it matters, Dr. Gloria spent a fair amount of time today talking about why it's important. Every single incident like this has a chance of spreading coronavirus, and that is not in any of our interests at this point. So, thank you very much for your call. We also have an online question?
We have an email question for schools. We understand that, this is from Chris. We understand that graduation, prom, and other senior activities have been canceled, and that you're planning other types of activities. Can you give more details? And, do these events have to be canceled, or can they be postponed until later this summer?
So, Dr. Braebrand, you sent a letter to all of our seniors earlier this week. If you want to address this question, and then I might add on to it.
Sure. So, I think I've heard the question. The simplest response right now, graduations have not been canceled at this time. I did send a letter to seniors saying with the governor's order through June 10th, that graduation could be impacted. But, in that same letter, I shared that the high school principals, all the high school principals and our leadership team and school board are committed to figuring out how we're going to do graduation, including alternative approaches, even virtual graduations if necessary. We're just going to have to continue to work with the state and monitor the governor's orders. We have some flexibility around the current scheduling of graduation. We're also going to look at alternatives to how we can do the graduation. So, all options remain on the table, and I shared with seniors, I understand how disruptive the last few weeks have been and the next few months have been, but we're going to do everything we can to make graduation happen in some shape or form, and to recognize here at the end of the year their contributions as students, and we're all committed to doing that.
And, if I could just add a bit to that, parents of seniors, please understand, I know you know this better than all of us, but we share in their frustration and frankly a grieving process, because this is the period of time in their high school years where it's supposed to be celebratory and enjoying those last moments of sharing things like signing yearbooks and going to prom and having senior nights for each of our sports teams that are finishing up their season, and all of those have been disrupted. So, we are committed to finding other ways of recognizing and celebrating the successes of all of our kids. And, if it is not in the traditional April, May, June timeframe, we are looking at other opportunities. It may be in the fall, or when our kids return from college at winter break, we will work with you to find ways of celebrating these kids' successes.
Thank you. We have another online question?
So, a question from Kathy for schools. Can you tell us if the schools that are currently under construction are in a holding pattern, or is that work still being done and moving forward?
So, this is our capital improvement, our renovations, and things like that for our schools?
Yes.
Dr. Braebrand, I know that we are looking to approve some of those contracts soon. Do you want to address that?
Yeah. You know, I don't have an answer that I could share with you today. I know that building in terms of nationwide, that building has been, construction has been deemed an essential activity, but I don't know specifics for Fairfax County Public Schools right off the cuff this morning. I'll check with our assistant superintendent, Jeff Plannenberg, if we can include that in one of the FAQs. And, that's just a reminder, lots of our questions that are coming in, we're putting up at www.fcpse.edu. We really encourage everyone to take a look at that website and get your questions answered, and we'll put an answer up about that very shortly.
Thank you. And, I think that's a great reminder about the website, www.fcpse.edu, and that'll have a lot more information than what we could possibly cover in our town meeting today, so please don't hesitate to go there. We have another phone call. This is the virtual town meeting, Mount Vernon Virtual Town Meeting. Welcome.
Hello, Dan?
Yes. Good morning.
Yes. Dan, I wanted to start out by saying it's an honor for us to have you as our supervisor, and thank you for setting up this virtual town meeting for us.
Thank you.
As a longtime resident in Riverside Gardens, it's also an honor to have you as a neighbor.
Thank you.
Okay, Dan, a question would be this, a comment. As you mentioned earlier in our meeting, not everyone is following the social distancing guidelines. And, two places it is especially apparent that folks are not following the guidelines are at the Fairfax County Public School Athletic Facilities and the Fairfax County Park Authority Playgrounds. And, I feel that these places are going to be breeding grounds for the COVID-19 in our county. Also, I think this noncompliance with the guidelines will only increase as the weather improves. I suggest that the Fairfax County Public Schools and Fairfax County Park Authority put up signs and caution tape and lock the gates to the fields to discourage community use of these facilities. I don't know about all the parks and schools in Fairfax County, but at the Carl Sandberg Intermediate School, there are several athletic fields, as I know you're well aware of, Dan, because I've seen you jogging there.
Yes.
And, all the fields are wide open and being used. Also, the fields at Fort Hug Elementary are wide open. Also, in the Stratford Landing Park, the playground facilities are wide open and are being used by kids and adults over there with the kids. Now, I know that putting up signs, caution tape, and locking the gates to the fields is not a perfect solution, but I feel it would discourage some folks from using these facilities, and that would definitely be a step in the right direction. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you for your call, and I think there's probably a couple of different folks who need to respond to. Let me start first with Dr. Gloria. In general, Dr. Gloria, children at playgrounds, can they play by themselves or a family member, or is that not right? Or, is it just a matter of the social distancing on the playground itself? Because of touching equipment, does that bother and matter? And then, we'll go to, I love to hear from the schools as well, so...
So, definitely, social distancing is paramount. It's being more than six feet apart. The tricky part about kids playing is that, you know, if the equipment that they're using, the playground equipment is not cleaned in between them, then even when you social distance, you know, kids, depending on how old they are, they can be licking, you know, equipment or, and so on, which could be problematic. So, one of the things that maybe this, moving forward with the CDC recommendation for face coverings, it might be helpful to limit some of the potential exposures that might happen, except that, you know, kids less than two years is not recommended for them, so...
To wear a mask, less than two years.
That's correct. So, which is what makes the stay-at-home order important, because even though you can social distance in some settings, you can't ensure frequent cleaning of these high-touch surfaces, and which could then, you know, cause a problem.
So, basically discourage and prefer that parents not bring their children to playgrounds and not have their children play at playgrounds because of the, frankly, the risk that there's somebody who was ill was there, and they put their hands on the same playground equipment, you know, an hour or two hours or, you know, even 24 hours later.
And, you know, if playgrounds could be wiped in between use, like we do at the gym, that could be helpful, but it's almost impractical, and not everybody will do it. So, I mean, I think if, you know, several kids that their family members know each other were to be at a playground setting in which social distancing is practiced, and there is cleaning so that the kids are utilizing different parts of the playground equipment, that would be safe. But, it's almost, if you can't do that and ensure that cleaning, then it's better for the kids not to be in that setting at all.
The public settings, yes.
That's correct.
Yep.
So, Dan...
Yes, Chairman?
Dan, this is an area where there's been great collaboration between Fairfax County Public Schools, the Park Authority, and frankly, the county executive and Dr. Braebrand. We, two weeks ago, raised this concern and made sure that there were notices put up. It took a bit of time to get them all up at both our parks, because sometimes we have facilities that may be adjacent to a school, and people think they're part of the school, but they're actually part of the park service or the community services. And, so, we have been working to get everything marked, but this is an area where we really have to work collaboratively with the community in asking the community to cooperate and not utilize our facilities in large groups. This past weekend, at Bryant Alternative School, there was a group of about 20 kids who were all playing basketball and enjoying our facilities, and that is not helpful for those students or those kids, nor is it helpful for the community. And, so, what we are encouraging people to do is practice those social distancing guidelines, no matter how old you are. They're important guidelines for your own physical health, but also for the health of everybody else in the community.
Well said, and I think particularly your point, Chairman Corbett Sanders, is that there isn't always a clear line between Park Authority, or for that matter, Neighborhood and Community Services locations and school locations, that we frankly have done a wonderful job, is really, we started the conversation of how we partner together, how we utilize facilities between all the different organizations, frankly, for the benefit of our community, which is who we want to try to always serve. So, we have another online question?
We have an email question from Mika. "I'm just seeing the distance learning plans, and it feels overwhelming with two young school students and working parents. Will there be an opportunity for parents and teachers to give feedback on the success or failure of distance learning? And also, is there any polling being done on how equitable the distance learning is? Even if kids get computers, not all home situations will be equal."
Excellent question. Scott, do you want to start, and then I can add on if necessary?
Sure. I think I've heard a little bit about it. We certainly recognize how overwhelming this feels to do distance learning. It's completely different, and it does not replicate day-to-day, face-to-face instruction in Fairfax County Public Schools. We've said that, and I think we need to continue to say it even as we begin this distance learning. This is doing the best that we can do in the crisis that we have with COVID-19. It is overwhelming for many of our families to try to be working in the home and trying to supervise their kids for education. We recognize that. So, we're going to want to take your feedback. Please start by giving your teachers feedback, reaching out and giving the principals feedback, and we are going to continue to do this in a spirit of monitoring and adjusting this learning plan as we go along. We really have tried to balance the amount of on-time screen time that our kids are getting. Some of the time is going to be teacher-virtually-led instruction. Some of the time is going to be teacher-supported instruction, and sometimes it's just going to be independent work and activities that have nothing to do with getting on a computer. And, as Chairman Corbett Sanders said, for K through 8th grade, we actually have learning packets that will be mailed out in this first week, and then parents will have the ability to opt out if they don't want to require having it be mailed. They can simply access it online. But, it is going to be a learning process for all of us, and reach out when you need help, and recognize it's not going to be perfect. And, I think here, we can't let perfect be the enemy of the good for our teachers. We've tried to tell teachers it's not going to be perfect. We need to say the same thing to parents. And, I encourage you, too, to do something that Chairman Corbett Sanders mentioned earlier. We are offering outreach to a school psychologist or social worker for at least 30 minutes. There's information about that on our website at www.fcpse.edu. And, we're going to get through this together, and we're going to do the best we absolutely can to continue to provide education for your children during this time, and we're all going to have to just endure a little bit of change and work together and make it the best change that it can be.
Thank you, Scott. I would also suggest that it's okay to feel overwhelmed. We are all feeling a bit overwhelmed, but what we need to ensure for everybody is that they have access to the resources to help them address these feelings and have the tools in their toolbox to be able to best meet their needs of their families and their students. Along those lines, I would also urge people to take the time to have some family time, some time to actually work on independent projects that are not driven by the curriculum of the distance learning, because it will be important for our own mental health to have those periods of mindfulness and distraction.
I would say that's very well said, and one that maybe harkens us back to an earlier time where we did. This gives us that time, more family time. This gives us that time, more family time, and in some cases, maybe more family time than what we really would like. But the flip side of that is you learn and engage and frankly, discover other parts of the relationship that maybe had kind of been put in the background because we were so focused on the day-to-day, or so focused on the particular media or device that we were working with. So we have another phone call. Yes, you're welcome to the virtual town meeting? You're welcome to the Mount Vernon Virtual Town Meeting? Still can't quite hear you. If you could repeat your... If you could start over again, please? We're not able to hear you. So we're going to go on to a online question?
This is an email question for schools from Andy. He says, "If the students still had books and workbooks, the continuity of learning would not have been interrupted. Why did you take away students' hardcover books and related workbooks?"
So the question is, why have we eliminated student workbooks in our elementary and middle school curriculum? And there are a lot of reasons for that, including the availability of them. I'm going to let Dr. Brabran address how curriculum has changed over time in light of our textbook manufacturers really changing the way they deliver their product.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. There have been changes in the materials that we've used for both elementary, middle, and high school. I could get more specific information to your question. Frankly, a lot of the information has been content area-driven, whether it's science, math, English, social studies, in terms of what is offered. We have been committed, we've had a community task force that's been a part of selecting our instructional materials, led by Dr. Sloan Presidio, our assistant superintendent for instructional resources. And we continue to want to hear community support for the kind of materials that we're giving kids. A lot of the materials actually have shifted to be online and digital materials, which is really helping us right now. But we certainly appreciate your feedback, and I would offer that you could share this feedback with your school's principal, and we'll share it with Dr. Presidio and the instructional team here in Fairfax as we move forward.
And additionally, we are sending to all of the homes work packets, which will essentially be like workbooks for our kids.
Well, thank you both. We have another online question.
Tracy asked us a question earlier, and she's now wondering, Karen, if you can provide your email address for the follow-up email. She's found Dr. Brabran's.
Your personal, your school board email address?
Oh, it's superintendent@fcpss.edu, correct, Scott?
That's correct.
And Chairman Corbett?
And mine is K-L-C-O-R, B as in boy, E-T-T-S-A-N@fcpss.edu.
Thank you. And we have another online question.
Chairman Sanders, can you tell us about, a little bit about the school feeds program and how well it's going, and if there are any more plans to expand?
The school? I didn't quite hear that either, so...
The school feed, the program to feed students during this time? Can you just tell us a little bit about...
Oh, the feeding program. Yes. There are 34 sites, as well as a bus distribution. Families are able to access the grab-and-go meals between 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. It will continue next week during spring break and afterwards when we resume our distance learning. If you have a question as to where those sites are, you can go online at fcpss.edu, and there is a link to all of the sites. Here in Mount Vernon, the Mount Vernon and Lee area, we have Bucknell Elementary, Cameron Elementary, Edison High School, Fort Belvoir Upper School on the military base, Hydler Valley Elementary School, Lorton Station Elementary School, Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School, South County High School, Audubon, Gum Springs Community Center, and the Mount Eagle Elementary School.
Thank you. We have another phone call. This will be our last phone call before we will need to conclude our virtual town meeting. Yes, you're on the Mount Vernon District Virtual Town Meeting.
Ask her what her question is.
Can you be specific as to your question? I'm sorry, we can barely hear you, but if you could just be very clear about the specific question you'd like for us to answer? I'm sorry, we're not able to hear your question at this time. You're welcome to send us your question via email, and we will absolutely get back with you. And with that, I do thank you all for your great questions, but that's all the time that we have today for that. I'd especially like to thank my guest, Dr. Gloria. Thank you for being here today. And Chairman Corbett Sanders, thank you very much for being here today. And Dr. Brabran, superintendent of schools, thank you very much, sir. We had a lot of questions, and obviously, a lot of keen interest on everybody's part about what's going on and how does this fit into these extraordinary times that we're living in. I'm sorry, if we didn't get to your question, we will respond to them as soon as possible. And please don't hesitate to email those questions to us. As we close, I want to remind each of you to stay in your homes as much as possible, stay six feet away from others when you're out, and of course, the proverbial, wash your hands. Wash your hands more times than you ever imagined, but it does make a huge difference. And check out the county website and our Get Help, Give Help webpage for more ways you can help. Always, for more information on COVID-19, please call our office at 703-780-7518, or you're absolutely welcome to email our office at mtvernon@fairfaxcounty.gov. You can also visit the county website at fairfaxcounty.gov/covid19, and the Health Department website at fairfaxcounty.gov/health, as well as you can always do the same with the www.fcpss.edu website. And don't forget to sign up for text message alerts, texting F-F-X-C-O-V-I-D. You text F-F-F-F-X-C-O-V-I-D to the number 888-777. Again, thank you for joining us today, and please be safe and be well, and wash your hands and be socially distant. Thank you.